One, two, three, four, five. Very good. We can go. All right. We'll call the order. The Village of East D regular meeting Monday, January eighteenth, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Catherine, could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Lyman.
Here.
Trustee Selleb.
Here.
Trustee Wood won't be here. Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen.
Here.
Trustee Coonsey.
I am here.
And President Miller.
Here. We will forego the Pledge of Allegiance as as Catherine mentioned, trustee Wood will not be here this evening. I'm assuming that she's gonna have a very busy week. So we have public comment on agenda items only. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board on anything on the agenda? I'm not saying any visitors or unknowns. Okay, so we'll move on. We have no consent agenda item this evening. We move on to first, I guess, the introduction of Deputy Police Chief Shanita Stewart. Jennifer, we're gonna
You know, you know, I think I told her, you know, give it to about 6:30 until we get to you on the agenda. So she might not, she might not be here.
She is here.
She is here.
I'm here, chief.
Oh, great.
She's right there.
Great. Jennifer?
I'm away.
Go ahead. Well, actually, George, I'll turn it over to you. I figured I let you handle it.
So Shanita Stewart began with us a week ago today, and she's already making an impact. She's an outstanding investigator, and she and our detective Jessica Merinos are working the shooting case from a week ago today. And they're being very thorough about it. But let me tell you about Shanita. So she's worked 21 years in the Lincolnwood Police Department, rising to the rank of deputy chief. And she spent, I don't know, eight or more years on the the task, the homicide task force called NORTEF. And and we've seen that she has remarkable, not just investigative skills, but people's skills. And we're delighted to have her with us. She instantly makes us a better police department. And she's making the people around her better also, including myself. Shanita, welcome.
Welcome. Absolutely. All right. Well, we'll enjoy seeing you around in person and as well as on our phone calls or our Zoom calls once in a while, I'm assuming. So again, welcome to the family and let us know if there's anything that we need or that you need from us. That takes us to item B, which is the ILEAP presentation.
Oh, yeah. ILEAP is John Lawson on?
He's here, yes.
I'm here.
Good, good. ILEAP is a stands for the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And you all know that I'm big on accreditation because it's a management model that I think leads us to be more professional all the way around. They have standards that we have to, we have to meet. And John Lawson has been our accreditation manager. And you might remember, I still remember the look on on Greg Smith's face a couple of years ago when I reported that we didn't have any written directives. Well, we have a full manual right now, and I won't say it's complete because it's never completed. It's an evolving document. And John Lawson has has created our written directives with input from everybody in the department. And he has written them to comply with the ILEAP standards. And so ILEAP has two tiers. We have been accredited to tier one. And John Lawson has just he's just been appointed chief of police of the Harper Community College Police Department. But he insists on staying part-time with us because he wants to finish tier two. So accreditation to tier two is upcoming. I don't want to give a timeframe for it, but John, to his credit, wants to finish that project for us. John, what what else can you say about ILEAP?
Well, I remember sitting down with George probably about two and a half years ago. So I asked him, I said, so how many policies are out there? And I see Jennifer laughing because I was, I couldn't believe that a police department nowadays only had five policies out there, which is a big liability factor. So we worked right away with the the top, probably the top seven. We got those out right away. And we we plugged along. And I always had the philosophy of it's not the accreditation manager that writes the policies. It's not the chief that writes the policies. It's the whole organization. So what we did was is we draft something up, we send it out to everybody. Everybody's got an input. And 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 we continued to do that. So we came a long way. I remember the first day I showed George the book and we had one policy and I said, hey, look at, we're almost there. I'll give you another 300 to go, but we're there now. And I was proud to say in July, the assessors from ILEAP came out and they spent a day and a half here. Actually, they interviewed some of the people that are at the meeting tonight. And and, you know, after a few changes we had to make, we became accredited. So George, I can't remember what number we are in the state either. Do you remember 30th? I think we're 30th in the state now.
I think it's higher than that.
Is it higher? Maybe 50, something like that. So so we we are now a tier one. We're gonna move forward to tier two now that we have a DC that could give me a helping hand. That'd be great. And it's an achievement. So if you look at the squad cars, all the squad cars have the accreditation sticker on there. The front of the police station has a big accreditation sticker on there and also the rear of the back door. So oh, there it is. There it is, George. Good. So usually that is given out at one of the board meetings by one of the Illinois Association Chiefs of Police vice presidents. But since we can't do it, that is our official certification right there. So I think I'm proud, along with everybody else in the department, we've really professionalized the police department. So couldn't have done it without the all the elected officials and especially Jennifer and Brad. I know I bucked the heck out of you all the time for a lot of stuff. So we did it all together.
And so let me interrupt here because it would be difficult for me to overstate how important John Lawson's contributions have been. Not only do we have a fully accredited police department now, but we have written directives that meet those standards and that the process he used was great because it included everybody. And it was more meticulous than he has just described. So in recognition of his accomplishments, I presented him last week with a plaque for the Chief's Award for Meritorious Service. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Chief's Award for Meritorious Service. It's an administrative award. Because, you know, usually, of course, everyone knows police officers do something, they get accommodation or something of that sort. This is the internal award. This is administrative in nature. And it's about making us a better organization, better operations, and better administration. So, John, thank you very much. I cannot overstate the importance of John Lawson's contributions to us.
Well, thank you, George. You know, I've been a police officer for 37 years and I, this is the first award of this high statute that I've ever seen. So everybody's giving me a hard time wondering when I'm going to start Harper College with their accreditation. And I can say the wheels are moving.
Well, good. Is accreditation designation is something that's being compelled by the state for municipalities to acquire?
Let me ask a choice. John, would you answer that, please?
Yeah, Jeff, I think maybe you're talking about the federal use of force.
I'm talking about any efforts towards accommodation or accreditation, whatever it means. I'm wondering, is it done? Are we being self-directed to achieve this? Or is there something coming down from the state telling every municipality that you have to acquire this?
No, there is nothing coming down saying you have to inquire it. However, if you are an accredited agency, it helps tremendously with your risk management company in case some legal issues happen. However, it did benefit us also when we applied for the federal use of force certification through the Department of Justice because we were already an accredited agency. So we didn't have to pay anything, first of all, and we didn't have to go through the whole process since we were already an accredited agency in the state.
I have a question, either George or John. What is the difference between the two levels of the two tiers?
Well, there are, the issue is how many standards do you have to comply with?
Got it.
Kalia is the national accreditation. I don't see us going for it because it's expensive and we're a very small agency. And it's far more standards, like, I don't know, quadruple the number of standards. But ILEAP is a step in the right direction and tier two will be even a higher step. And I think what Jeff is talking about is the use of force certification. In order to get that, and John Lawson did that for us also. It says if you, to be eligible for federal funding, federal grants, you have to get the certification, which we now have. No, you don't have to have it, and not all agencies get federal funds. The one that stands out to me is the Bulletproof Grant Partnership. Those are federal funds that pay for half of our bulletproof vests.
Same thing with the DUI details or the seatbelt enforcement, anything that we get a grant through the Illinois Department of Transportation. Illinois Department of Transportation gets funding from the federal. So we would, if we didn't get certified with the use of force mandate, we wouldn't be eligible for any of those federal funds.
I could just add, I just wanted to thank John as well, and I want to make sure this achievement isn't isn't undersold. This is my fourth small municipality I've worked in in three different counties. This is the first one to have achieved the accreditation. And it really comes down to, you know, what kind of services are we provided? Are they standardized? Are we protecting ourselves from liability, which is key in this climate? And we were not doing that before, and we're doing that now. And he did a great job with George getting the buy-in of the officers and the sergeants. I participated in some of those discussions and it was done correctly. It's not a manual on the shelf. It's fully implemented. And it's going to protect us. It really comes down to officer safety and liability. It's very important. And I'm proud that we've achieved it for a town of 3,000. This is a remarkable achievement, and he did it for about 25 bucks an hour. So thank you, John. I know you weren't doing it for the money. You were doing it for us. So thank you.
Also, I want to echo that sentiment, John and George, and of course, everybody in the department and staff that helped out with that. You've you've all worked to do something that's making us a better police department. And congratulations on your your new gig. And I'm glad that you decided to stick around with us for a little bit longer.
Most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Congratulations, John.
All right, that takes us on to our fiscal year 2020 audit presentation.
Brandis is speaking, but she's muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Every time. Sorry. We have Tim Gavin on the Zoom call with us today. He is from Lauterbach and Amen. And they were the auditors who conducted our audit for our fiscal year 2020. And he will give a high-level overview of our audit. And feel free to ask any questions after he's done with the presentation.
Thank you, Brandis. Thanks for having me here this evening. I I'm told you all have received electronic copies of the audit report. So first and foremost, I want to express thanks to Brandis and her team for their cooperation this year. The audit process, all things considered, went very smoothly. Despite the fact it's been a very weird year for everybody. So again, all things considered, everything went very well. We're always pleased by that. So the village does issue a comprehensive annual financial report and has been doing so for a while. And what that really means is the village issues the standard level of financial reporting plus some additional optional items that make the report more useful and add more value to the reader. I'm going to cover just a couple of points about the report. And like Brandon said, happy to answer any questions at that point. The first item I want to point out in the report is is the only part with our letterhead on it, and that's on page 13. If you are following along in the packet PDF, it would be page 28. Title Independent Auditors Report, essentially the only actual product of our audit. The top of the following page is where we officially issue what we call an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we are permitted to give. And I believe I probably said this last year, because I say at every board meeting, if you don't read anything else in this entire report, I highly encourage you to read the management's discussion and analysis. As I've said before, it provides a great high-level overview of the report, points out the most important financial highlights, does a summary comparison of this year versus last year, and provides some narrative analysis of why those numbers have changed. So by reading that, it tells you most of what you need to know at a, in a general level about the financial report. Obviously, there are a lot of numbers here. I'm going to point out just a few of them in particular. The pages 33 and 34 of the CAFER, I'm going to try and give you a packet pages, too. That would be starting page 51 of the packet as the balance sheet of the governmental funds of the village. And there you do see at the bottom of page 33, the general fund does report a positive unassigned fund balance, which is always a good thing. It's your primary operating fund. And the unassigned fund balance represents any remaining funds that are essentially unclaimed by third parties or or internal restrictions. Overall, however, the village of having a positive fund balance, a significant portion of that is restricted for TIFs. Moving on to a couple pages later, pages 36 and 37, packet pages 54 and 55, essentially the income statement of the governmental funds. And overall, the village did see a net increase in total fund balance of about 928,000. And in your primary operating fund, the general fund, $870,000 increase in fund balance for the year. A few pages later, CAFER page 41, packet page 60, the income statement for your enterprise funds, so your water system and sewer system. Overall, both funds combined showed a net increase in equity of just over $300,000. Just a couple of small items I wanted to point out. In the note disclosures, obviously, there's a ton of information there. And at your leisure, if you're, maybe if you're having trouble sleeping, go through those on your own. But the one item I wanted to point out is is usually if we stick something in that's for one year only, it's often worthy of note. On page 73 of the CAFER, I believe that would be packet page. Here, packet page 92 is just a brief note addressing and acknowledging the COVID-19 pandemic. As of April, sorry, April 30th, 2020, it was well underway but far from over. So essentially, it's it's a disclosure that indicates as of that date, the true financial impact of the pandemic is not determinable. But it does draw attention to the reader that there's an acknowledgement there, and future financial statements will will yield what that effect has been. The last thing I wanted to point out, second to last thing, on CAFER page 89, packet page 109 is the funding history of the Police Pension Fund in terms of villages' contributions. The village has taken intentional steps toward contributing the full amount of the actuary's recommendation. So the newest year to add to that trend information does show that for fiscal year 2020, the full amount of the actuarially determined contribution was indeed made by the village. And the last thing I want to point out is, I won't go through any of the details, but one of the useful things about issuing a comprehensive annual financial report is the statistical section. And that starts on page, CAFER page 136 and packet page 163. And the statistical section presents 10 years of trend data on various items, financial trends, the village's ability to raise and collect revenue, to issue and then pay off debt, some demographic and economic information, as well as some operating statistics. It's an excellent source of where the village has been in the last 10 years and what has led the village to where where you're at today. So again, worthy of paging through and doing some analysis. Nothing particular of note that I will get into detail this evening, but I wanted to make you all aware of that. At this point, like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
There are no specific questions. I would like to add on a little bit of that. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure I draw your attention to a few things because this document can be really overwhelming, but there's a lot in here that's good for you to understand. And from my perspective, it's a lot of good news. In the transmittal letter, we've taken the time to take the goals of the strategic plan and report on the progress that was made within this fiscal year. And then we've also included some more up-to-date information since we're far into that into the the year at this point. But what you can see is we're using the strategic plan as a guide for budgeting, and then we're tracking that progress and reporting on it through the audit. So you can see that we are doing the job at implementing the strategic plan, and we're putting our money where our goals are. And that's a really important concept to understand that we continue to come back to these goals and allocate resources, but then also follow through and report on on that progress. So please take time to to read that. Obviously, we've accomplished a lot. There's a lot of progress, projects that were completed and a and a lot that we're working towards. I also wanted to make sure you can see the trends in the reserves. So in the fiscal year 2017, if you remember, we were 1.2 million. I had a cash shortage of 1.2 million. So basically, we had 1.2 million that was outstanding without cash. And I want you to see where we are now. I believe this audit reports about $8 million in cash. If you look at the financial report in your packet this evening for October 2020, you'll see we've even made further progress on that. And we've done the best we can to break out what's restricted for debt service and what's also liquid and available at any given time. But the April 30th is a is a great benchmark date because it's consistent from one audit to another. Then you can see how that cash is becoming accumulated. And unfortunately, fortunately, and unfortunately, will be available for facing some of the cash shortage we'll have during the pandemic. So but that's good. This is why we build up our reserves. This is why we have it. And we do have it. I also wanted to talk about two other things briefly. Tim did mention the pension fund and our contributions, but if you go back to the page, the statistical section that he referenced, you're going to see by making that additional contribution, the percentage of payroll that goes towards the pension fund reduced about four percentage points. And it doesn't seem like a lot. But all it has been doing is increasing. So unfortunately, during COVID, we couldn't meet the Lauterbach and Amen recommend recommended contribution. But we did exceed the statutory requirement. And you can see the progress is it is having an impact on the progress. And so basically, the way I think about percentage of payroll, for every hundred dollars we pay an employee, we have to pay $60 more for their pension right now. And that was, that was growing. So it's good to see it coming and reversing and going in the opposite direction. That's good news for us. The consolidation, I think, by the state is going to help us immensely. Just because we're penalized by the size of our pension fund, we are limited in where we can actually make investments. So that's going to be a game changer for us. We're still waiting for that to happen. But in the meantime, if we can continue those contributions, that would be great. The last thing I wanted to point out because it does have, is relevant with the TIF revenues, the property taxes coming in. You're going to see in the statistical section, and I've also summarized it in the transmittal letter, that we've had a EAB growth of 45%. So that's even higher now. You know, I track this continuously. We're about to have a JRB meeting for the TIF, and I'll report on it again. But that's huge because the growth in the village is growth in TIF revenues. So we kind of made it through that bubble where we had a lot of obligations and a lower EAB. We made the right investments into the TIF districts that raised the EAB. Also, the local economy just got better. We got out of the recession. So when you think about 45% growth in EAB, you can almost think 45% growth in TIF revenues. And so that is really stabilizing the village. And once we're able to get out of this COVID, I think our bond rating will improve because of the improving financial condition. So I just want to summarize. Once again, we've had a really strong year. Again, this year, we're in right now, isn't looking too bad, considering COVID. I think we're doing quite well, and we'll we'll see that at the next audit report. But I just want to make sure you guys really understand where we are and what this document means. It's one of the most exciting documents. I know you probably find it very boring. But for me, it's one of the most exciting documents because I get to see how did we do? I think we've done well, and I think you guys should understand that and look through it. And we're here to answer any questions you know, you might have going forward. So thank you.
I think I have. Would it be accurate if I were to look at, where did I see that? Sorry, I've been kind of flipping through these pages here. I'm sorry, I lost my page. I was looking at a page that had a tracking of each year's general obligation bonds and actually all of our debt, I guess. Let's see, where is that?
Possibly CAFER page.
Looks like on the agenda, it's page 182. It says ratios of outstanding debt by type. So I guess my question is, these numbers, if if I were to read, add up all the numbers across for each year, would that general, would that be our total debt for each of those years? Is that how I read this?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I just wanted to know what what that represents. So I just wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to point out here that it is going down because we're making those bond payments. We're on, you know, schedules to make them. But you'll have to always keep in mind that the TIF notes, which is the Pale Land Development Agreement, will allow those to grow to $10 million plus interest. So the good news there is that we cannot, we don't have to pay back any more than we earn on that project. So within the terror business project, we pay back 90% of what we earned. And that's how we pay those down. But I wanted to make sure you understood that because it does skew the debt growth. It looks like sometimes the debt is growing higher than it is. It looks like sometimes the debt is growing higher than it is. It is growing, but it's not really an obligation that's beyond our current obligation. So that's the one thing I wanted you to make sure you understood about that because it, it, it looks like we're taking on more debt. We're not taking on more debt. This is an agreement that's in place, and we'll never have to put out more than we've earned.
And that would be the TIF revenue notes?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, well, the general obligation bonds has gone down significantly over the last couple of years. I feel like I remember at one point, we asked if we could pay that down faster, and you said, no, those are all structured bonds that you can't prepay on.
There are two that we are able to refinance. Typically, that would be done to like stretch them out, but they're not, they're not great ones. I don't know how to describe it. It's a 20, one of them is only $197,000 a year, and we easily finance that bond. And so I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to pay it down or stretch it out. We would have to look into that. And the other one is tied directly to a project JD Buy Rider, where most of it is paid back by JD Buy Rider. So that doesn't make a lot of sense either. The rest of them are not ready for refunding, but we could certainly look at that closer if, you know, if the board would like us to.
Well, do we know, do we know when, you know, when these will be paid off? Assuming, of course, that we don't take on any more debt, which maybe is an impossible goal. But do we know when, you know, when it's scheduled to be debt-free, so to speak?
Debt-free. We do know the schedules are in here showing how long it will be until they're paid off. And we also have a comprehensive, like, it's part of my TIF projections. I have long-term projections going out to 2035, and I can, I look at them and I analyze and I see kind of when they flip upside down. We have some challenging years. We have some spikes in, you know, we have a police station debt, and then we have years where maybe like a TIF falls off. You know, we're losing revenue, but we're, so I have all of that in, and I'd be happy to send those projections to you. You could take a look at them and see what happens from year to year. But they're also, the actual debt schedules are in this audit report.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tim or Brandis?
The points I have are relatively few, but they're more operational. And looking through it, I'm seeing things that are just troubling. Building Department, the number of building permits issued is higher and by quite a bit of the number of inspections made. So my question then is, the difference being brought, being made up by contracting out those services to BF Tech? So for instance, if you issued 100 permits and you've got 50 inspections of the other 50 being made by BF Tech or somebody else? And then, of course, the question is always going to be, why? The other question I have is in the Water Department. We've got a population that's growing over last year from 2,800 some to just over 3,000, yet we have the number of water accounts dropping. So I'm wondering what that's all about, and the same thing with the refuse accounts. We have 1,172 accounts or 1,272 accounts, whatever it is. If we've got more people coming into the village, how is it we have fewer refuse accounts? These aren't, these are things that these relationships are not making sense to me. If you want, I'll email you, Jennifer, some more detail, but there's, there's a couple of other things too, and I don't want to go into too much detail on it, but.
Yeah, do you have a page number you can reference?
Yeah, it's towards the end of the document.
Okay, all right. Well, I can tell you that the correlation between the inspections and the permits, that's not reporting on, I mean, the inspections, like a certain permit has a number of inspections. That's not a reflection on who's doing those inspections. But if we have, like, so if you have additional questions about the inspections, I know this question's been asked before. Some of these are charged, you know, to be enough, and some are in-house. So I can ask, answer specific questions, but I wouldn't say there's anything in the audit that would give you information on.
No, there isn't.
Or explain a correlation between, that's just actual reporting. You know, number of inspections done, number of permits issued. And I don't know, we'd have to look in detail about why maybe the number of refuse or the number of water accounts have changed. They're just running a report. I bet maybe there was some old accounts in there before when they ran reports and they got a number and there were some inactive accounts. But we can look into those two items and report back.
Well, for, I mean, the refuse program that we have, I mean, it's not a situation where you have the opportunity to opt out of it, correct? I mean, if you have a home in East Dundee, we're going to pick up your garbage. It's not a, you know, a choice whether or not you want us to. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, unless you have more than three units, you know, that's, then you can, you're part of the program.
All right, well, I'll send you an email with a few other things then, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Tim, thanks a lot. Brandis, thank you for your help in this, and Jennifer, as always. Okay, now for the exciting one of the evening here, I need a motion on item D here.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 92 of the Village of East Dundee Village Code regarding ducks and chickens.
If we have a second on that?
I would be honored to be the second for that.
Thank you so much.
The main question, of course, is how many ducks?
How many ducks? That's always the question, isn't it?
And what kind? Dappy, Donald, or Daisy?
I think Peking.
There you go. You can't have the duck.
Okay, real discussion on ducks. Anybody anything for us?
Well, I mean, all we're doing is adding ducks to an existing.
Correct. We're amending ducks.
We are eliminating the annual permit because it really wasn't being done anyway. And I think the purpose is to inspect, make sure everything's set up correctly with the coop, and then respond, you know, on a complaint basis and make sure that they're doing what they are supposed to be doing and that we can instruct, give them any instruction they might get. So that's, that's the one change. The other things are really housekeeping items. So, yeah, basically, domestic ducks. I mean, Greg came up with some species name that I've never heard of before. Putting that in the ordinance, but it may basically mean the domestic duck.
Okay.
Correct. And as Jennifer's memo mentions, there was a cap of 10 chicken coop permits. The village could not issue more than that. That cap has been removed. I believe Jennifer's memo states that only three such permits have been issued. So that would be another change that the ordinance.
About that myself, and I wondered, you know, yeah, regardless of the fact that we've had so few requests, I removed the cap. We saw it worthwhile to put in there to begin with. What was the logic behind removing it?
Um, the logic is, I think, that sometimes things get put into ordinance that maybe don't make a lot of sense in practice. We, I would envision ourselves with someone coming with the 11th permit, and then I'd be back at the board saying, this person wants chickens, and they're the 11th permit, and we would change the permit. So I think it's just sometimes ordinances have a lot of extra detail in them. When you take them out, they just become more workable for the residents. So it's a recommendation. We don't have to strike it. But I looked at it and chuckled a little bit, and Greg and I had some good duck jokes. We, we made up. So we can certainly put the cap back in, but I have a good understanding of this village board. I think you're pretty flexible. So that's why we are recommending to take it out.
I'm all for duck.
There was nothing else either in that ordinance that required the removal of an abandoned coop, correct? And I wondered about that as I read through it. I thought, I don't know if that's going to cause any strife amongst neighbors, but if you are no longer raising chickens or ducks and haven't for a number of years, you can still keep the coop, I assume? Has that been never discussed?
Greg, do you recall, I believe?
I only ask because I'm being asked.
Right. As I recall, once the permit has been issued, meaning that the structure has been reviewed and approved, it's allowed to remain unless there's a violation of the ordinance. The structure has to remain sound, and there's other, you know, building code type requirements. Oh, and then, you know what? We did add this in on page three of the ordinance that a permit remains in effect until it's suspended, revoked, until you repeal the village code section, or if it's abandoned, which occurs without further action if no chickens or ducks are kept on a tract land for six or more consecutive months. So that's a new part of the ordinance. Since it's not an annual permit renewal, if they don't have ducks there or chickens, then the permit goes away.
So do we need to clarify in there that they then have to remove the coop? Or is that implied?
That's, you're only allowed to have a coop if you have a permit. And if the permit is revoked through abandonment, then the structure has to go as well. We could add in some language if you like on that, but the structure's only allowed to the extent there's a valid permit.
Okay, so it seems to me, Trustee Lyman, that the way it's presented does address that.
Okay. I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Anything else on this? Catherine?
Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Sella?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Yes.
De'Andreason? Yes? It was freezing up. Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Okay. Takes you to our financial reports, which you have in your packet, as well as the October 2020 monthly report. We'll move on to the board reports. I have no report this evening. It's been a quiet week. We'll start with Trustee Sella.
No report.
Trustee Coonsey.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
Um, well, Phil, how are you? I just wanted to say one thing. I did see in your report that you did turn in a request to the Forest Reserve about taking care of the trails, which I appreciate. I did want to say that, you know, I was thinking about last week when we talked about this or the other week, two weeks ago, and I just want to make it clear that I am more than willing to help with this. If you, you mentioned the hardest, the most time-consuming part for you guys might be walking the Salter down the path. I'm more than willing to do that. So if you help me get started, I will do it. Okay?
Great, thank you. Thank you for your offer to help.
Good.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Okay, I was just notified here that we, or I, take full responsibility for skipping item E on the agenda here. So we got so excited on the ducks and chickens, I just moved right on. But I could have a motion to approve the village board minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated January 4th, 2021.
Do we have a second? All right, very good. Discussion? Catherine?
Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Sella?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Yes.
And Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
All right, very good. That takes us to Trustee Lyman, I believe.
The only thing I have is, I just need to touch base with Phil. I'm in Arizona right now until the end of the month. But I need to get with you when I get back. I'll be back on the first to get those letters, the East Dundee letters. I want to touch base with you on those so I can rebuild those signs for the depot.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Okay, as long as we still have them, don't throw them because I'm going to rebuild those signs.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Trustee Andreason?
More report.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, I just had a question, and it's mainly, I think, probably more directed to George or Jennifer or anybody else who was involved. Within your update, Jennifer's update, the mention of the House Bill 3653 about the police reform, I was just wondering, is this officially passed and now law? Was the number one, number two, was the Paternal Order of Police, Illinois, FOP, involved in this? Have they aligned on this? And then number three, how do you see these new requirements of points in this changing drastically, if at all, anything that the village police force does currently?
George, I can go first, answer what I know, and then you can weigh in. So to the best of my knowledge, it has not been signed by the governor yet, although I would expect it to be signed by the governor. I don't, I followed this from an Illinois Municipal League perspective, so George would have to weigh in on what the police were doing from the police chief's perspective or from the FOP. From the IML, they were opposed to it, but they did have two victories, small victories. Not small, really. One of them was to, they took language out, which would have removed all of our immunity, which would be bad, basically allowing, like, exposing our liability much more than it is. We have something called tort immunity, which protects us in our actions in all sorts of things, like tripping on sidewalks and everything we do. And so that would have been removed. We were, IML was able to retain that. They were also able to retain a penalty. We would have been, basically, the state would have withheld our income tax is distributed to us if we didn't get body cams. Now, the legislation that passed basically says if we don't have body cams, we may not be eligible for certain types of grant funding. So there was two victories, but we really participated through Metro West and IML on the opposition to this bill, not because of what's contained in it, but because of some of these other items. It does appear that this will be signed, and we'll have to explore, you know, putting our body cameras into place. And other than that, I think there are things that the chief association agrees with and things that are just more difficult. You know, the body cameras was the perspective from, is just the storage and the cost to store all these videos is really, you know, why we had the hesitation and then the resistance. But the practice is fine, and I think it's something that everybody, you know, would agree with. So I don't know, George, what other things can you mention from the police perspective on this bill?
Well, first of all, the police vigorously objected to much of what's in this 700-page bill. And, you know, they're doing a lot of catastrophe thinking. You know, I think we have to wait and see on a lot of it. For example, the body worn cameras are due, we have to be equipped by 2025, so they're giving us some time to do this. We're not opposed to body cams. Some of our officers wish we were doing it now. For me, I mean, it's a solution in search of a problem because we don't have issues that require body cams. It can't hurt us. Matter of fact, police tend to think body cameras help us more than they hurt. If you're doing the job right, what are you afraid of? Nothing. Bring out the video. And we have all the body cameras, and they're in unopened boxes. Under my predecessor, they obtained them. Trouble is, then I got a bill for $20,000 for the storage, and we weren't even wearing them and using them yet. So what it would cost probably more today. It's an unfunded mandate, of course, and some people say that this is the effort to defund the police because obviously, they give us these unfunded mandates. The money has to come from somewhere, you know. But I'm not, I'm not really worried about it. We've got the cameras. We can implement them whenever we need to, and we got four years to do it. Let's see, the cash bail system, eliminating the cash bail system. I will tell you that I do not have an opinion on this. I really don't know how this is going to play out. I want to be open-minded about it, and I don't do catastrophe thinking. We'll see what happens. It goes into effect. And I don't do catastrophe thinking. Um, we'll see what happens. It it goes into effect in two years from now, twenty twenty-three. And the the system is gonna have to be developed by the courts. I don't know what that's gonna be. It's intriguing, though, and and I I don't know other, other states that have done this, so I don't have a frame of reference. The use of force, um, the police chiefs were very much opposed to this. Allowing the use of force only to prevent physical harm to officers or others, bans chokeholds. And uh requires that the officers must give a warning before using deadly force. Well, that's a little, sometimes that can be unrealistic. I mean, if there's an urgent crisis, but I'm not concerned about that. We, our officers are very skilled at using restraint. And uh, in fact, I'm giving a commendation to a couple of officers that made a traffic stop recently. And there was a handgun on the passenger side floor between the legs of a passenger. And the officers did a great job getting them out of the car safely and recovering the firearm with no use of force at all. Beautifully done. And the thi, thing here that bans police from acquiring military gear, we don't do that anyway, so it doesn't affect us. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think, um, I think the one thing, you know, that there were a couple of things in here and you've addressed most of them. But this whole decertifying and fire problematic officers and databases and that kind of thing. Um, that's where I was wondering if if the uh Fraternal Order of Police or the Chiefs um were really. What the, what the position was on that.
Well, my position, uh Kathleen, is simple. I favor this. It should be made easier for us to decertify. We don't have a good system in place to certify anyway, so that would have to be developed. And um, and the other thing is that uh, you know, one department uh fires an officer. And he, he or she goes to another department and gets on. So we have to have this certification system to stop that.
Great. That's, that's all I had. Thank you so much, Chief.
Can I follow up, though, George?
Um, yeah, please.
You know what the retention requirements are for video uh for body cam use?
Um, yeah, I think it's ninety days.
So i- if that's the case, I don't understand, storage is cheap. So Jennifer, to your comment, the reason why we weren't going full bore with that kind of program was that the cost was prohibitive for its storage of video. I, I don't see how that, where that, where that comes from. Cuz right now, in the whole IT world, the cheapest thing amongst everything is storage.
Well, that's surprise, I'm surprised to hear that, cuz when I came here, uh, getting on the three years ago, I got a bill in the mail for storage. And it was nineteen thousand dollars. The year before, it had been twenty thousand.
Was, we, I would be very curious to see what that was storage of, because if we've never had the cameras in use, what were they storing? The physical.
That's, I think that the twenty thousand dollars refers to um a license to be able to use the storage. So this isn't like your iPhone where you're just going on the iCloud. There has to be a system in place where these cameras automatically go someplace, are stored on a cloud someplace. And then there's a secure way of storing them and allowing people to access them. So some company has written that software and depending on which system you have, you have to use their software to be able to get to it. So that's what the cost is, not actually the cost of storage.
Company is Exxon, yeah.
Oh, man, that that doesn't seem right, but we'll, I'll look into.
Again, if you have an iPhone and you wanna save your pictures, where are you storing it? You're storing it on Apple's system because that's the only one you can. You can't try to make your own, oh, okay, I'm just using that as a comparison.
Right, no, no, I get that. I I'm just, yeah, okay, I mean, yeah, all right.
Well, and and the other. Um, the other thing is the management, um, and the protocols that go behind what you save. I I was talking to a sergeant from um the Elgin Police Department, who's a a friend of ours. And um, we were talking about um the protocols they put into place. And what, what has to go away so that they can minimize the cost of the storage um and how it's all rated and a whole nother program. It sounds like it's done internally and not necessarily by the um. By the um subs, what you subscribe to to actually store it. So there's a whole nother level. Is that true, chief, or?
Well, I, I'm afraid I'm not familiar with the details, but we would, of course, if we go to this, uh, we will be um. Reaching out to our neighbors and our partners and we'll, because we'll have to develop a written policy, of course.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
We, are we able to uh? Bid out those services for retaining that video or are we tied to this company cuz we bought the equipment from them?
I don't know the answer to that. That's a good question.
And George, I just have a quick question as well. So it, you said there was a ninety-day retention. I'm guessing that's for just all the, all the feeds. But that if something were to arise, that there's another place where you could save like particular incidents or particular days somewhere else?
Well, if we have a a significant incident, we will save it as long as we need to, and especially if court is involved.
Yeah, cuz cuz my concern would be is again, and I'm sure Greg could answer this cuz I don't practice this area of law. But, you know, if somebody were to allege like a civil rights violation, I mean, I'm assuming they have at least a year or two in order to file a lawsuit for that. And the thing that would be concerning is if, you know, the, you know, if somebody gets pulled over, officer doesn't think it's that big a, you know, I mean, like, nothing happens. And then, you know, so the, so the video is like, you know, it's, you know, it goes bye-bye. And then all of a sudden, somebody files a civil rights lawsuit saying, oh, I only got pulled over cuz, you know, I fit in X, Y, or Z class. That would, that would actually be like, so then the whole purpose of having those, which is to protect, you know, well, it's to protect everybody. But, you know, in this situation where you wanna protect an officer from a frivolous or unfounded claim. You know, the, the, the cameras don't actually have their desired effect because this person waited till the end of the statute of limitations to file a frivolous claim. After which, you know, point, the, the video had already been destroyed or, you know, recorded over, for lack of better words.
Scott, you bring up a good point. Uh, the public would certainly well know that we're saving, that our policy is to save ninety days. However, if there's a noteworthy incident, we immediately earmark that and we hang on to it.
But my concern is that this would not be a noteworthy incident because the claim is complete BS.
Okay, that could happen.
Yeah. Actually, I think that whole um law that's being written, actually that bill that's being proposed is kind of. In a whole structure on what you mentioned, Scott. I mean, it seems as though all the, the crux of it, as I read through. It was just an effort to try and make it more difficult to be a police officer. You know, I mean, it was, I think it's BS. What are you gonna do?
Good. Well, let's move on. We're gonna go to uh reports from staff, uh Administrator Johnson.
Sure, um trustee Sella, at the beginning, asked a question about COVID. So I just wanted to briefly cover two points in case you didn't see it um in my report. Uh, one, the governor is looking at the metrics closely uh to move us from tier three to tier two. Within phase four of the Restore Illinois Plan. Um, that doesn't do much. Uh, he moved three other regions, so we're waiting for uh more movement. But we are stuck on our hospitalizations metric. We're not meeting that metric in King County um or in region eight. And if you look at region eight closely, you'll see that King County has been kind of pulling DuPage County down a little bit. Our, um, our cases are higher. Um, so something may change here. The governor says that indoor dining is going to open sooner um than anticipated. Um, but um I don't know what that means. He may be changing the metrics or something else. Or components of his plans or the tiers that he's put out in place. So um, the other thing I wanted to touch on was vaccines. I wanted to make sure that you saw all the vaccination. Information that's available right now. Uh, the Department of Public Health does have a tracking mechanism on their website now. I included a link in in my report. Um, and you can see how many uh people are vaccinated. Um, within King County and the percentage of the population. So I had a meeting uh with the Health Department and the new King County Board Chairman. Um, it does seem like um it is going to be kind of a slow process. Um, but it is moving forward. Uh, we had a lot of uh discussion about this one B phase of vaccination, which will be the next phase. Um, it is a change from what we anticipated because prior vaccination plans called for the vaccination of families. Of first responders. Um, that's the way we've always worked with the county. They have a list. Um, that's out the window completely now. So first responder means law enforcement and firefighters only. Um, I did bring up and ask the chairman to consider public works as first responders cuz they certainly are. Especially when it comes to water um treatment. And they said that they were willing to to do that. Um, but any um basically administration staff of the village, any elected officials are not going to make it. Into one phase, one B in the vaccination plan. So we are out. Um, we need to wait and that's, that's fine. You know, that, that makes a lot of sense for us to wait. Um, if, unless you're sixty-five or older, you know, then you will be in this phase one B. The other takeaway from that is that it's slow to get through the one A phase, but it's going to be very slow to get through the one B phase. It includes a lot of people. Um, so it's going to take a a very long time. Uh, you know, the county is talking about. Oh, we put out a thousand vaccinations this week. Well, there's five hundred and twenty-eight thousand people in the county. So um, just be patient. Uh, I'm not gonna repeat the three Ws because everyone's so tired of hearing that. But just remember that if you're not vaccinated, um, that, you know, you still need to protect yourself. Um, I also thought it was interesting and I thought I would pass this along. This is the first time I've ever heard this. And I'm sure it's been out there, but um just because you have the vaccine and you can't get COVID yourself, doesn't mean you can't pass it on. So they have not verified that, that it, that you can't spread it to somebody else. So that is new. I did not know that at all. Um, so I thought I would uh share that with you, so.
It's even if you've been vaccinated?
Correct, correct. It, it prevents you from getting it, but, but not passing it along. Um, they have not been able to prove that you can't spread it. So I thought that was disappointing. Um, but interesting to share and uh it's uh continue to provide you with information um as it becomes available. The King County Chairman, I can see uh, Chris Kayus is on here. Uh, she's been amazing. And she has agreed to meet with us regularly um with Metro West. Um, and uh keep the conversation going. Her real focus now is on um economic recovery. And how the county can recover um out of this. So I'll keep you posted. Obviously, there's more uh proposals at the federal government for more money coming uh to the community. So we will make sure if anything does come, that we'll get it onto our businesses because not many businesses. Um, receive funding. I would like to give, though, uh. Cliff Serge is a shout out. I keep saying it, but I can't. I want him to hear it. Um, and I want you guys to understand that if it weren't, if it weren't for him, our two amusement centers in East Dundee would not have gotten any. COVID funding at all. And uh both Sanders Village and Paintball got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm sure they appreciate that and um it's gonna make a difference, you know, so. That's all I have unless anyone has anything for me.
Good, village attorney?
I had no report this evening. Thank you.
Village engineer? Okay, um, Phil?
No report this evening.
Chief Carpenter?
Uh, just one item. A week ago today, we uh had a shooting in the village and shootings are very rare. All I'll tell you is that we have an active, ongoing investigation. The victim is a resident of uh DeKalb. And uh, we have leads we're following and we will follow those leads as long as they take us. Uh, hopefully up to and including arrest and charges. That concludes my report.
Very good. Brandis? Very good. All right, that takes us to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to address this board this evening?
I have a non-agenda item. Can I ask either Amanda or Catherine to check to see if you received my water bill from last month? I can't see. I, I wrote it out, but I haven't seen it clear my, my checking, so. I'm just hoping that I wrote it. Hmm, I mean, I know I did.
You're a humid rain delay.
Yeah, could be.
We have no executive session this evening, so at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Very good. In favor? Opposed? All right, folks, go home, stay safe. See you next week.
Next week, oh.